Or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated. And if these behaviors occur, the Chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the Chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the Chair will ask if there are any new comments, and then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal and response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the Chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the Board at the Chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shoreland, or zoning ordinances, and any other relevant regulations. After the Board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the Board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the Board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the Planning Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the Board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the Board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. Sydney ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Departments at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public hearing. You have the right to hear and see what's happening. We welcome public participation. Okay, so moving on to our first item on the agenda is minutes from August 20, August 2nd, 2023. The, of members that are on the, on the Board right now, the only one who can't vote is Todd. So, everybody else was present.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero. One abstention. All right. Moving on to new business, file number R19-30460 Community Drive. We have the applicant here. Okay. Jamie, could you just orient us before the applicant?
This project is for York County Community College. They currently operate a remote facility on Community Drive here in town. They are looking to do about a 10,000, little over 10,000 square foot addition to expand their trades program, basically, welding and CNC machine equipment operators. This came through site plan, coming out of site plan, we had about 10 comments asking them to, to review and revise. They have provided us an updated plan. We're down to just a couple housekeeping items left, left to address after tonight.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Drew Olahowski with Haley Ward, representing the applicant, York County Community College. So as Jamie mentioned, this project is generally an expansion to the existing industrial trade center at 60 Community Drive. The purpose of this project is to provide new courses for students at this facility, mainly new welding labs and pipe fitting workshops. As you can see from the site plan, we are adding expansion to the west side of the existing building. From there, we are adding quite a bit of additional parking to meet the needs of both the existing and proposed aspects of this facility. We are adding a bit more parking than what's needed per the ordinance. This is mainly to account for potential future expansions to the facility, as well as just to cover our bases for any large events that might be held here, just to make sure there's enough room for everybody. For utilities, new sewer will be provided for the expansion. We're going to be tying into a manhole out on Community Drive, right in front of the facility. Water and power will be provided from within the existing building, so that will be connected internally. Stormwater management, we're generally directing all runoff from the new areas of the site to a detention pond at the northwest corner of the property. And from there, that detention pond will outlet to the northeast corner of the property. As I'm sure you saw in your packets, there were quite a few concerns from the water district, just because this is in a wellhead protection zone. So that's one of the reasons why we directed that runoff to the northeast side of the site, just because the well is located to the northwest. So just try to keep that as far away as possible. So yeah, there were quite a few staff comments, but I believe all of the major ones were addressed at this point. And just one other piece I want to add, we are expecting this to be a fairly high visibility project. Senator Susan Collins, as well as the Secretary of the Navy, have already been to the site and expressed how excited they are for a project like this. We also are getting calls from BIW and the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, pretty much on a weekly basis, just checking how our progress is going. So hopefully, if the Board does have any outstanding comments, those can be taken care of post-approval, just to really keep this moving. So with that, I'd open up to the Board for any comments.
Great, thank you. All right, before we open the public hearing, are there any other staff comments?
I think Drew covered it pretty well. The one thing that we were still looking at outstanding was the parking calculation. I wasn't sure if you had updated that.
Yep, I have updated plans with me tonight.
You did? Okay, great. So we don't have that digitally yet, but you could pull it up if you wanted to on that computer. You can pull it up just by going sideways on that Google Drive, some of the site plans. I had the rendering set up for you there, but.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we're excited for this project, and they did address most of our concerns in the supplemental submission, so.
All right, thank you. All right, so I guess I will now declare the public hearing open and open it up to anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project. All right, anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this project? I don't think we have anybody on Zoom. Okay, anyone who would like to make a general comment or ask a question? All right, declare the public hearing closed and take it up for planning board discussion.
One quick question. So is the water district was satisfied with the final plan to divert the runoff to that detention pond?
They were satisfied, yep. So, is this on? There we go. So the applicant added in the boundary of the wellhead protection to their site plan, and then also identified any old fuel tanks on-site. That was the remaining comments coming out of the water district.
Yeah, on the original 1995 site plan for the site, there was a fuel tank shown within the building in this north or southeast corner. We did talk to the owner, and that fuel tank isn't there anymore, so we did remove that. That was added inadvertently, but that, that was one of the water district's bigger issues, but that's, that's not a problem.
Go ahead, Todd.
As a resident, I'm very excited about the project, bringing more potential students to the area, construction, that's all great. The plan looks fine. The one thing, there was a comment that the 25-foot buffer is being satisfied by the existing retention pond, and I know you're adding quite a few feet of the new parking. And I thought, with that driveway, that are you putting more buffer, more vegetation on the opposite end of that new driveway where the parking now is going to expose a lot more vegeta, well, it's going to expose cars to the driveway?
We aren't planning on adding any new vegetation. We'll essentially just be maintaining what's, what's there currently. It's pretty, pretty wooded in that area.
So are you leaving, are you leaving the trees to the street side? That's what I wanted to make sure of, because it doesn't show from, from what I saw, so.
Yep, those will be maintained.
All right, thank you. That's helpful.
So we discussed, oh, give me one second. We discussed the conditions that we were still trying to get, we doubt, was that one condition, the parking calculations? Is that the only thing we were really concerned about?
I have, I have two conditions left in the suggested motion, one of which was to provide a copy of easement documentation, given permission. There's a little bit of fill extension onto the butter's lot that the community college also owns. They did put a note on the plan that there's going to be easements, but we haven't actually seen the documentation for it yet. So one condition is they provide a set easement documentation, given permission for lot R19303 from R19304. And then the second condition was update the plan to accurately depict the number location of all parking spots.
All right, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions in regards to the parking. Will there be any plans for road signs for public safety and traffic flow?
We did update our plans to include some stop signs within this little intersection here that we're creating at the entrance, but that's the extent of the signs we're adding.
Oh, good, awesome. That's great. And then my last question is regarding emergency access, is what is being presented, is that adequate for, what is my note? Adequate? Are there any outstanding concerns?
No, they did, they did provide an updated turn-in template for our truck 37, showing it has full access around the site.
Oh, great. This looks good. I'm really excited.
Great. Any other comments from the Board? I don't, I don't have any concerns even, I don't even have any concerns with those conditions that we have remaining. So I think we're ready for findings of fact.
280-16-7A utilization of the site, this condition is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
280-16-7N solid waste disposal, this has been met because the solid waste is proposed to be collected on-site and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
280-16-7Q technical and financial capacity, this has been met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
280-16-7P shoreline relationship, this standard is not applicable, the standard, sorry, the applicant is not proposing any development, this standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Group one. 280-16-7B access to the site, 280-16-7C access into the site, 280-16-7D internal vehicular circulation, and 280-16-7E pedestrian circulation. These standards have been met. The development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Group two. 280-16-7F stormwater management, 280-16-7G erosion control, 280-16-7H water supply, 280-16-7I sewage disposal, 280-16-7J utilities, 280-16-7K natural features, 280-16-7L groundwater protection, 280-16-7M exterior lighting, 280-16-7O landscaping, and 280-16-7R buffering. These standards have been met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Those are the findings. Yes, that should have been listed, so, I'm sorry. 280-16-7S airport encroachment, this standard has been met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero. All right, do we have a draft motion?
We do. The Planning Board accepts the information in the June 24th, 2024 summer report, grant the requested waivers, and find the major site plan amendment, file R19-304, to expand the existing building by 10,400 square feet, expand the existing parking area, install stormwater treatment and associated site improvements, has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the Zone Ordinance, subject to the following conditions. By August 17, 2024, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide three copies of revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, provide copy of easement documentation from map and lot R19303, given permission for grading/failing from map and lot R19-304. B, update the plan to accurately depict the number/locations of all parking spots. And then two, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number six, inspection fee escrow, number seven, pre-construction meeting, number eight, landscaping performance guarantee, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Okay, so moving on to new business, file number I38-2 Clark Street and Camp Street. Jamie, could you please orient us on this?
Yes, this is a preliminary subdivision amendment slash approval for five single-family house lots. Currently, it was part of a subdivision from the early 19th century that had 22 very small lots accessed by a paper street. The applicant purchased this lot some years ago and is looking to create five larger single-family house lots, technically on two paper streets. It's, it's a unique setup, I'll say. This came out of site plan with, this is preliminary, so as normal, it came out of site plan with quite a few comments. We haven't received updated plans in between site plan and now, but that's typical because preliminary, they, they come back and resubmit for their final after they make the amendments. So there are some concerns. I have since spoken with the property owner. She, she did come in and ask some questions, so I suspect they might have some comments for us tonight.
Okay, thank you. Right.
Good evening. My name is Carl Beal, consulting engineer, assisting Red LLC, and Rebecca LaPierre, the project owner, with seeking, you know, preliminary approval for a five-lot subdivision on Camp and Clark Street, which come off of Boothby Avenue in Sanford, Maine. Like Jamie said, we went to site plan review, and there were a lot of comments, staff looking for additional information, and we're certainly, we certainly intend to provide answers and, and make changes that all the, the staff has requested. There's, there's no issue with that. These are four fairly small, affordable homes that Rebecca intends to utilize the main state Affordable Housing Program to assist with the, with the development of So there are private ways designed for Clark Avenue and Camp Street that intersects at a 90-degree, 90-degree angle. I guess the, the two big comment, the two big questions that we have is, we've asked for a waiver for installing sidewalks on this project due to the size of it, and to, again, reduce costs and make, make the Affordable Housing Program work. The Board, the planning, our understanding is the Planning Board is the final say on whether sidewalks are required, if, on both sides, on one side, and what the material might be. So I guess we'd be looking for the Board to discuss it and at least give us a little bit of guidance on, on what you want to see for this project. Another comment was, from the staff, was property lines should be perpendicular to the street. This parcel is pretty tight. You can see on the screen, single-family homes, just a driveway, room for two parking spaces, and we have one diagonal lot line that comes from the intersection of Clark and Camp and goes to the back of those two lots adjacent to the intersection. So I guess we're wondering if, if the Board is going to be okay with that, or if they're going to want some additional configuration of that, of those lot lines. Essentially, that's the overview of the project. Really, really tight, tight site. There's a wetland off to the right, east, east of this parcel. So we have a protected wooded, we have a wooded buffer that we're going to protect along that wetland to filter out sediment from, from stormwater runoff. And we also have stormwater management infrastructure that's going to be constructed inside, inside the hatched area on that plan. That hatched area is common land to protect the trees, protect the buffer, and also contain the, contain the stormwater BMPs. Essentially, that's, that's it. Welcome your comments.
All right, thank you. I'm sure we'll have some comments after we do the public hearing. Is there any staff comments before we open the public hearing?
I think I made an outline of most of the comments in my staff report. That's on the, in your packet. We had a pretty lengthy discussion, I would say, at Site Plan Review Committee, and there are still some outlying topics to be discussed. Carl mentioned a couple of them as far as the lot lines and sidewalks. There's also the provision for solid waste removal, so we had discussed potentially utilizing a dumpster and private waste hauler in order to facilitate trash pickup because the city municipal services won't drive down a private way. So right now, the site plan is still indicating that the trash bins would be put out on Boothby, but that is not recommended. The other comments would be related to landscaping, so in some of the previous subdivision reviews that we've done lately, we've asked for developers that are putting in a private way to put, also include the street trees that are placed per the ordinance, no more than 50 feet apart. So that's one item. Another item that has come up during subdivision review is the access to recreational amenities or open space. The applicant has indicated there's open space at the bottom of the hill here, but we're not sure if that is necessarily an amenity, and that is something that we should discuss because we've, have discussed it with other developers. And then the other portion is that there are, I believe, some residents in the audience tonight, but some questions regarding the access to several of the lots that are currently using the paper street, and how they would be incorporated into a maintenance agreement for the private way. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. All right, so I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this project?
Good evening. My name's Steve Cabana. I live at 9 Hemlock Drive in Sanford. I'm a local Realtor. I'm sure all of you are well aware of the housing crisis that not only Sanford suffers by, but the state. Affordable housing is one of our biggest markets that we are lacking in. Too many properties have escalated in price, and it's keeping a lot of first-time home buyers out of the market. It's also creating issues for rent because there are no rents. I'd also like to address the sidewalk concern or question. I don't know the Planning Board or the code rules specifically to sidewalks. I do question why you would ask any developer to put sidewalks onto streets that lead to streets with no sidewalks. It just doesn't seem to, to merit any rational reasoning behind that, and it's just, you know, an additional expense, not only in installing them, but then they need to be maintained. Thank you.
Right. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Hi. We're Angela and Mark Callaway from 13 Boothby Ave. We are directly perpendicular to Clark Ave, and I wrote something to read to you. We're here, we have owned our home since 2006. We are here to oppose the development of lot I38-2. At a minimum, we are requesting an extension on any decision concerning this development as we are trying to hire a legal counsel to help us with this matter. We have been in touch with several law firms and have been finding that they are not able to take on our case. We are currently waiting for a call back from Bergeron and Parkinson and Kennybunk. Our main concern is the conversion of the paper road Clark Ave into a private road controlled by an HOA. We do not want to join an HOA and should not be required to do so. It would be a financial burden and should not be a requirement to long-term homeowners abutting Clark Ave. For about 100 years, Clark Ave has remained a dirt paper road and has never been developed. We have used Clark Ave as our access to our parking area and garage since the purchase of our home through multiple owners, and since the homes were built in the 1930s, Clark Ave has been used as a driveway for 9 and 13 Boothby Ave. Both 9 and 13 Boothby Ave had no access to our parking areas or garage via Boothby Ave. Any road development and utility placement would inhibit the use of the parking areas and garage. All current and previous owners of 9 and 13 Boothby Ave have paid for the plowing and upkeep of Clark Ave. Boothby Ave is a quiet, dead-end road with very little traffic. Building a road so close to our homes will cause significant increase in noise and traffic. Clark Ave runs directly perpendicular to the backyards of 9 and Boothby Ave. This is a safety concern for children playing outside and pets. It will also dissolve any privacy in our backyards. This project would reduce, possibly reduce our property values as well because we will be so close to a road. We are also against the sidewalks as those would cross directly across our yards. We are also against the sidewalks as those would cross directly across our yards and right in front of where we sit on our picnic table and enjoy our yards. But again, we would please ask that you extend any decision on this approval until we can obtain our own legal counsel and find out what our rights are as an easement to our own driveways. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Was there somebody else who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Kelly Murray. I own the property at 9 Boothby Ave with my partner Lance Upham. We would also at this time like to ask for any extension on any decisions at this time. At the time we got the letter in the mail for this, my partner was in the hospital in Massachusetts. So we've had no time to prepare for this whatsoever. We, again, are trying to find out our legal rights with everything. And then first and foremost, immediate concerns, same as our neighbors. Having a road put in in the middle of our houses, how are we going to access our driveways? The only way we can access our driveways is going through Clark Ave to get to our property. We own that plus one other lot on the side, so we have two lots that we would need to access. And I mean, is it going to be a one-way street, two-way street? How much space is going to be there? How much traffic is going to be there? Rubbish removal was another topic that has come up that we've had questions about. There's a lot of questions we have. Is there another alternative way to put a road in to access this area without going through both of our property areas to our driveways? And then with us, with our loan, if there's any easement requests on our property, we have a direct loan through USDA Rural Development. They're very strict about what we can do with the property. Everything would have to go through them and get approved first with them. So those are our immediate concerns at this time. Again, we may have more, but we would need more time to prepare. So if we could have more time, at least, you know, an extension for this, to look further into this. That's what we'd be requesting.
Okay, thank you.
And sorry, just one more. The HOA fee thing again. Not signing our mortgage with an HOA built in, we certainly don't want to do that now. Again, it would be a financial burden for us as well. So to maybe come up with some sort of agreement if something is put into place, we're still aiming to access the road without becoming part of an HOA because financially, we would not be able to do that as well. And since we didn't initially sign our mortgage that way, we would ask to keep it that way.
Okay, thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, is there anyone who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we can pick it up for a planning board discussion.
Can I ask a quick question? Something that really caught my attention. Are the existing homeowners going to be required to join an HOA?
That hasn't been determined as of yet. So there was some discussion at Site Plan. Because it's a private way, we require the developer to form an HOA for maintenance of the private way because it isn't and probably never will be maintained by the city of Sanford. So as part of our ordinance, they are required to form a homeowners association and provide us a draft easement and maintenance documents for that private way. This is a fairly unique situation where we have two current landowners that have their driveway accessed off of that paper street. So the question is, is because they access it off the paper street, are they going to be forced to join the HOA? Because technically, the paper street is going to become a paved road, and their driveways are going to then be off of the paved road. So that hasn't been decided as of yet. It's a discussion point.
I would say I think I would have some concerns about forcing people who aren't part of an HOA to be joining one. I think that would be a concern for me.
So the way I understand it is, setting aside any cost sharing, we would still have to have whatever this agreement would be memorialized in the HOA just so that we can keep, you know, that we're not going to pass a burden down the road or something like that.
I would say whatever the final decision is, yes, it would have to be memorialized in those documents.
Who makes the final decision?
Attorneys.
Okay. Could you explain to the people in the audience how this preliminary subdivision works?
I was going to do that. I spoke with the husband of the first property owners at Site Plan, but just so you all understand how our subdivision process works, we are here tonight for a preliminary subdivision approval. So coming out of tonight, that is not an approval. After tonight, they're going to be given a list of stuff that's discussed as well as other stuff that's not discussed. They will then have to resubmit a whole other application, very similar to today's, with updated plans and plans with a whole lot more detail on them. That will come before Site Plan View Committee, which, again, the gentleman did attend a couple, well, about a month ago at this point. And then they will come back again before the planning board once the comments out of Site Plan have been addressed. So tonight's discussion is a preliminary discussion, which basically just makes all of these concerns available to both staff, the planning board, and the developers. So this is the first, what I'm going to say, higher-level altitude review of the project to give the developer guidance on how to proceed with that final application. After tonight, they will then decide how they want to proceed. It might be a day, it might be a week, it might be a year before they come back again with their final submittal. You guys would be noticed again as the abutters. You would then have the opportunity to come back and speak with us, speak with the board. That would give you more than ample time to have your own discussions with any attorneys or land surveyors or whoever you guys felt necessary to have your own discussions with. It'll give them time to consult their attorneys to answer some of these questions and come back with a plan that is much more robust and detailed for all of us to be able to review and make decisions based upon. We have a two-part subdivision approval to give you guys as abutters the ability to voice your concerns, to give the planning board their ability to voice concerns, to give staff, and to give the applicants time to work on the plans. Subdivisions are an onerous process that takes time. This might seem rushed. It might seem like we're making a decision tonight. Tonight is just a preliminary discussion. There are no decisions coming out of tonight's meeting. It's just a discussion.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, any other topics, other topics of discussion?
The fire chief was concerned about turnarounds. Has that been addressed or is that still in the works?
That's still in the design process, but we intend to provide turnarounds at the end of each street to meet the fire chief's concerns.
They did request the waiver for turnarounds at Site Plan. It was discussed that we've never granted a waiver for turnarounds, that that is a primary component in road infrastructure, especially in rear lots like this. You have to be able to get turnarounds. Fire department and ambulance access is number one priority.
Any other topics, any other topics of concern? Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I've got a few, but I figured I'd let you guys all.
I've probably been on the record more than a few times about being a proponent of sidewalks, but certainly, I think in the urban zone, I think sidewalks are an important part of infrastructure. And if they're not going to be built today, they'll be built at some point in the future. And probably, you know, taxpayers will end up footing the bill. As far as the sidewalks are nowhere, I understand that argument. But, you know, if we don't build any sidewalks, you know, I think it's a burden for pedestrians too, and safety really needs to be a concern. And it sounds like there's going to be an issue if sidewalks were built. It does sound like it would interfere with the existing house lots that are already there. Was that concern that was brought forward, is that correct? Are they going to lose part of their front yard if a sidewalk is built?
Ben, can you pull up my screen, please? So this is the GIS photo of the area. J-38-9A and J-38-12 are the two homes owned by the abutters that spoke tonight. This right here is the paper street. So I'm not going to say these property lines are 100% accurate because they are not. This is just our GIS picture. But as you can see, especially for the first people that spoke, this is the GIS representation of where that property line is, and this is their front door. So that measurement is about six, six and a half feet from the edge of the property line. Now, the proposed private road is not going right up to that property line. But this does show you, if you look at the picture, they're kind of utilizing some of the current paper street as their front yard. If that was not there, their house is essentially on the property line.
Would it be possible to build houses without calling this a subdivision? Instead of maybe five houses, maybe two or three, or is it something?
You could divide a lot once without it being called a subdivision.
You could build one.
They would still have to provide frontage. They would still have to do the paper street, the private way to provide legal frontage. So that wouldn't necessarily eliminate most of these comments.
It would still be a subdivision.
Can we force them to put sidewalks all the way out to Boothby Ave?
So our ordinance has it as a provision. It has it as a provision that is waivable by the planning board.
Yeah, but they don't own the property out there.
The paper streets are interesting. It sounds like these guys have started their research on them. They've learned how interesting they are. So one of the discussion points coming out of Site Plan was that the property owner would have to verify right title and interest for that paper street just for the education of the general public and everybody here. A paper street is basically a street shown on a subdivision plan that was never built. And then there's a state statute that says the municipality has to, every 20 years, renew the public interest in the paper street, or it is then deemed vacated. The city of Sanford has continued every 20 years to renew our interest in paper streets. The applicant is going to have to verify that these two particular paper streets are on our list of paper streets that we've remained interested in. If the city has maintained interest in them, then generically speaking, then it does give the public at large the right to utilize it in the interest of the public. So they get interest in. I have had several conversations with city attorneys. I will continue to have those, not only for this project, but paper streets in general. We've had several projects come in as of late on portions thereof of paper streets. A lot of our front land has been occupied. So as the housing crisis continues, we're going to see more and more of these rear lots that were potentially accessed by paper streets come before us. So we will continue to get clarification through the attorneys on what all this means for us.
Can we find out if the city council will actually put sidewalks into Boothby Ave or any of these other streets? I mean, it seems ridiculous.
The city council cannot lock future decisions of council. So they would not be able to say that in 10 years, we might put sidewalks. They can't put words in future council's mouths.
Okay.
I'd like to go on record that I am not for adding sidewalks that go to nowhere, especially on a subdivision of small, you know, the road is relatively quiet to begin with. Safety is not a concern. I know other projects we have put sidewalks in. They were on busy, you know, that went to nowhere, which still bothers me, but they were at least on busy roads. I don't have concerns with sidewalk.
So I'll just play devil's advocate here because I think we've been pretty split on this discussion topic is that these decisions have not been made correctly in the past, right? It is a requirement in the urban zone. It hasn't been done. It hasn't been done over and over and over again. Now we're at an opportunity to either not do it right for the ordinance or do it right and play catch-up. I understand it goes to nowhere. The other challenge is that we have asked other developers to do the same thing. So in the nature, you know, in the interest of being consistent, that should be something else we consider. I agree. I think a sidewalk to nowhere is... I have issues with it, but I just want to throw this out there to kind of keep that discussion going. Jack?
Have asked other subdivisions to put in gravel walkways, too.
I was going to say that we have tried to find the middle ground because we are such a split board when it comes to sidewalks. And we've asked them, you know, they don't have to have it on both sides of the road, or they can choose the material. Does it have to be, you know, cement, et cetera? So to kind of help with that cost, to offset the construction costs. But I have a question in regards to the image that is up on the screen. I know those lot lines are not accurate. But when it comes to that paper road, was that a road that someone just decided to just make a road because they wanted to, for example's sake, they wanted to have the driveway behind the house instead of in front of the house?
So in this case, about 100 years ago, they came in with an Inglewood subdivision, not through the, at that point, we didn't have a planning board in municipalities. So the owner of the property at the time created a subdivision plan, had it recorded at the Registry of Deeds, showing these two streets as future roads to provide access and frontage for all of these lots. So a paper street is, again, essentially a road shown on a subdivision plan that has not been built, that the municipality, in this case, the city of Sanford, has remained. We have documentation every 20 years saying that we were keeping our interest in it. So it was originally designed to be a road, but when they never actually built it out. So in some cases, at one point, the developer built the road up to, say, where it says the town of Sanford, and then stopped it there. And then it was a paper street from there on out. So it's just a right-of-way basically shown on a subdivision plan that was not built. Did I clarify it any?
You did. I'm just struggling as to how J-38-9A would essentially lose a lot of the land that they've been borrowing, for lack of a better word. But then look at how close that line is, then they lose a lot. And so when I think about however long the house has been there, that they've been borrowing it since the beginning of the time of the house essentially, that how much right do they have to that land from the paper road?
I'll play devil's advocate, you know, maybe not for the subdivision aspect, but at the same time, that back lot, I-38-2, likely has legal right-of-way to Boothby through that paper street. So by them utilizing that land that was designated for the paper street, you know, can't block access for a back lot either.
I agree with that.
So they're very difficult.
Yeah.
Especially when it's been maintained by another owner for, yeah, a long time.
This is not a problem unique to Sanford. This is every municipality pretty much in America that has this issue. Larger communities have more paper streets than others. I own a piece of property that has a paper street next to it that hasn't been vacated yet. So we have the same issue going on with projects behind and projects beside. So paper streets are arch-nemesis across America, I'll say, for the people that live on them.
Because once that road's paved, it has to meet the standard width, right?
So we actually have a provision in the urban zone that allows for the private way standards, which would normally only be wide enough to serve three homes to be used for up to 10. So it will not necessarily need to be built to public street standards, which is wider and has a deeper subbase. and has a deeper subbase. The applicant is currently proposing, I believe it's only 16 feet wide, which is what the typical dimensions for a private way are. So, again, because it's in the urban zone, it's allowed to serve up to 10 lots versus the normal three.
Jamie, for context, could you just bring your cursor over across that to see how wide that is?
Yes, please.
This right-of-way appears to be a standard 50-foot right-of-way.
Can you measure the existing road? Like, don't go to the property ones, but just to where they're?
Like, the existing driveway?
Yeah.
It's about 17, 18 feet wide.
Okay. Interesting.
And just to finish our comment Aaron started, that was a decision made by the planning board two and a half, three years ago, and it's kind of a combination of both the private way standards and the public street standards. It's kind of a mix of the two. Private way, you're allowed to do gravel. The urban zone private way, you have to pave. It's a little bit, so there are some variations. It's not just, it's not the plain blanket private way standards. You can do up to 10. We did require some upgrades to it to try to meet in the middle of, between the private way and the public street to allow up to this many units.
So, the applicant still has the option to choose to upgrade the roadway to private street standards, and then they would be allowed to serve more than what they're currently proposing. That is an option. We did talk about that at Site Plan Review Committee because if there's a certain amount of costs associated, for instance, if they're required to put concrete sidewalks on both sides of the street, that's a certain cost. In order to offset that cost, they may need more housing units on the end of that road, in which case, they might need to actually build to public street standards. So, it's all part of the discussion and why we've brought this forward to the planning board so we can kind of clear up some of those associated costs and right-of-way concerns.
So, if another owner off of this paper street came in, say, there are nine houses at some point in time, want to put two houses in, they, that applicant now would be responsible for?
They would need to pay to improve the roadway to public street standards, increasing it from the proposed 16-foot pavement.
Again, that's.
It would be written into the HOA somehow, should be addressed somehow in the HOA document as far as future expansion. So, we did have a similar project recently that built a private way to access three lots. There was a fourth lot in the rear that could potentially be developed in the future, and that subdivision didn't have designated right-of-way paper street already. They were doing it as part of their subdivision. They created the right-of-way and then the other lots that the private way was serving. We required that they maintain 50 feet of right-of-way there so that if that rear lot were to be developed in the future, that developer could pay to improve the private way and have full access of public street standards. But we didn't require them to build the road to public street because they were only servicing the three house lots.
I think that did require some kind of a pathway or something along the side of the driveway. Am I correct? Was it a gravel pathway?
We required a pathway on Jagger Mill, actually, to the bus stop. So, that was kind of perpendicular to the private way. It wasn't along the private way.
Okay.
It was to the other two lots on that, in that subdivision.
Right.
Has anyone used the sidewalk on Spencer Hill? Has anyone seen how silly it looks?
I don't frequent that road often during school bus.
Well, so, I think we have to also keep in mind that that is not an urban. This is, so, different areas of the city. Different development standards. So, just keep that in mind as we go through this discussion.
I think this, I was just going to say, I think there's a lot of legal issues that we need information on, I think.
Say that again?
I think there's a lot of information that we need legal issues about.
So, again, just a reminder, today, we really don't make a decision. Today, we're having a discussion, we're given the applicant discussion points to address before they come back for final.
I mean, I'm struggling with this a little bit because those legal issues dictate the development, and to such a degree, it's hard to have a discussion on it. I mean, I certainly have discussions on sidewalks and stuff like that, but, because that's going to come up regardless. But number of lots, configuration, everything's going to be dictated by some of those legal complications. I know we haven't touched on the diagonal lot line yet, so it's probably something else we can, you know, get clarity on. But as far as the right-of-way and the HOA questions and all that stuff, that's beyond us. And, but we'd have to have it clarified before we even make a final decision.
So, normally, we do, not normally, we do require the HOA draft documents be submitted as part of the final subdivision submittal. So, I think we could clarify some things in this meeting as far as what you'd like to see addressed in that HOA document, and then that gives the applicant time to go out and draft the document with their legal counsel, potentially have other legal counsel. If their abutters would like to utilize legal counsel, they can have participation in the drafting of that document, or they can come to some other legal agreement. But it would be good to have the conversation here with you all to see what you'd like to see included.
So, just for the HOA discussion, like, we just require the HOA. That's our only responsibility is to require the HOA. We can't, we don't dictate what goes in the HOA. We don't, we just require that the HOA, the maintenance agreement exists, and it's been filed with the city so that we can keep track of it. How they write it, how they work with their abutters to come up with a solution that is acceptable to everyone, that's outside of the planning board. All we can do is really say it's required, which it is by the standard.
Correct. It's required to include the plan for maintenance of the roadway, snow storage and snow removal, any kind of stormwater management. Waste management, if it's on, within the right-of-way, I guess, yes, but also waste management is just part of the subdivision review. But the, oh, yeah, no, you're right, to pay for removal if they're a private contractor. So, we do check for all of those things, but we don't necessarily limit it to only those things.
I think, you know, requiring, sorry, requiring, I think, people who don't belong to an issue way to be forced to join one, that wasn't in existence when they built a house or when they bought their house. Suddenly create this in an area which is not ideally suited for this type of development, I think is a problem.
I'm still confused on why they would be forced into an HOA.
Because they're using it.
But if they weren't using it?
So, if they had access elsewhere, they'd be all.
If they accessed it from Boothby Ave?
There is no access from Boothby.
Correct.
That's what, that's what really the crux of this.
And it hasn't been said that the abutters are going to be forced to be a pay-in member of an HOA. What has been said is that the, whatever agreement is reached, is going to have to become part of the document so it's memorialized so that it's memorialized. So, when you, banks require documentation for mortgages when you, when you are utilizing private roads. So, I'm not, I'm not remotely saying that they have to be pay-in members of an HOA. I'm just saying that the documents are going to have to discuss and memorialize whatever agreements are reached.
But their deeds have easements across the paper streets?
Sometimes. I haven't read these property deeds. Sometimes, yes. In the cases of like subdivisions like this, that are 100-plus years old, typically not. If they were subdivisions of today, they would, but not of that era. We've all read deeds of 110 years ago. It's land of Uncle Joe to land of Aunt Sue and to the, to the tree in the backyard that died 50 years ago. I mean, deeds of back then are very nonspecific.
Okay, so, let's just.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, there's not much, I mean, I don't want to get into legal battle of trying to give my, at that point, we're just giving opinions.
Right.
We have literally no legal say over what they come to an agreement with in regards to the HOA. But we do have jurisdiction over that diagonal lot and sidewalks.
Yes, as well as, let's come back to the diagonal lot for a second. Let's just go to, see if we can put opinion in the sidewalk discussion. If we did a straw poll, who is, who is against the waiver to reject sidewalks? Against the waiver?
I share with Lenny's thoughts on sidewalks, and I think it, in an effort to remain consistent with the other projects that we've approved through the planning board, to keep with the same, if you will, methods and means when it comes to sidewalks.
One side, two side?
I don't think two sides is required.
But even the way this subdivision is going to be designed, putting a sidewalk in is going to be a huge burden to the property owners, the way it's going to be plowing right through there, almost right up to the front door.
Sorry to interrupt you, Lenny, but sidewalks to nowhere might be the case today, right now, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's going to be the case in, you know, a couple years. We have the raise grant that's coming through and probably, who knows, whatever else and any other projects that come down the pipeline in the future that would promote sidewalks going down those roads. So, then, we're not backpedaling, which is exactly what we're doing now with this decision.
The city can't take care of the roads we have now. How do you think they're going to put sidewalks in where there aren't no sidewalks?
They don't even plow most of the sidewalks, nor do residents even take the initiative to plow sidewalk, take care of the sidewalks, the town doesn't in front of their house.
Just my opinion, do we have to approve this waiver tonight, or?
We don't, we don't approve any waivers tonight. We're just given guidance to the developer on whether you guys feel you might entertain the waiver in the final application. So, we don't want the developer to take the time and expense to design a sidewalk if you're going to end up waiving it, but we want them to take the time and expense of developing the sidewalk if we don't think there's any chance the waiver will be. So, no decisions are made tonight. It's really just trying to give them guidance on the best way to proceed for that final application.
What is the purpose of a sidewalk, in your guys' opinion? What, like, that ordinance, what is it trying to promote?
Safety of pedestrians.
It's pedestrian safety. It's recreation. It's getting students to a bus stop. It's the fact that we realize we are underserved by sidewalks and want to prevent that in the future, and one way to prevent it is to, as we do developments, require sidewalks. It's not a simple one-size-fits-all equation. It's, it's really just trying to evolve our infrastructure, one development at a time, so eventually, we can say we're actually pedestrian-friendly.
I mean, there are solutions other than just concrete. I mean, there are other solutions that could make it more attractive, affordable, or feasible, or whatever.
Someone still has to maintain it. And I know the HOA is responsible for maintaining it, but if I'm part of an HOA and they choose not to maintain a dirt sidewalk that I didn't want in the first place, it doesn't get maintained.
Okay, so, I think where we are here is obviously, I think the board is split on this, so I would recommend coming up with a solution to look into sidewalks, see what is available. I think the board, let me just ask those that are pushing the idea of sidewalks, are you stuck on, is one side of the road acceptable?
Yeah.
I think it'll be fine.
I think that's more than acceptable.
Go ahead.
You're going to have to come to the microphone, so, no, that's okay. The audience won't be able to hear you.
Oh, they'll be able to hear me, don't worry. So, Mark Halloway again, 13 Boothby Ave. I would just like the planning board to at least take in account that this is the one, one of the topics that both the abutters and the developer all agree on is no sidewalks. So, I mean, that should say something.
Did you say no sidewalks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I'm very much against sidewalks, as well as our neighbors, and I believe they're even saying no sidewalks. So, one topic that we all agree on. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I mean, and I understand that, and obviously, we're pretty passionate people up here talking about this. Unfortunately, what we're also trying to do is maintain that consistency with the planning standards that we've been charged with trying to maintain. Again, not saying that we're set in stone on this. I think we just need to continue to try to have this discussion. We need to look at options, what's out there. Okay.
Can I ask him a question?
No. Okay, let's move off sidewalks. I think we've spent enough time on that for the time being.
We never took a straw poll.
We did. We had, we, it was.
Wait, Todd, where do you stand? You've been quiet.
I know. I think they should look into the sidewalks, let them do their due diligence, whether they need it or not right now. I'd like to see it on, on paper. And I appreciate why the people in the area wouldn't want it, because it takes up more space, if there's going to be space to be taken. But I do want to see the developer at least go through the exercise of putting it on paper, not constructing yet.
All right, thank you. So, there's a couple other things that I think we should discuss. One is the diagonal lot. Let's come back to that in a second. There is a request for a stormwater waiver. Did I get that right?
A waiver of the drainage analysis. Is that correct? Yes. That has been requested, yes.
So, I mean, this is a pretty steep grade here, going down into a wetland. I'm not, I'm not sure that we can even waive that.
Again, that is a provision that is not waived. I can't think of a time we've waived it. So, precedent has been that, especially on sites of this nature, that they would have to, we have accepted different levels of stormwater review, but they've always had to do some level at least.
Can we see a picture of that on the map? Do you still have that?
I'm sorry?
As Matt say.
Do you still have a picture on the?
Yes.
On the computer? Just to see where that is.
While Jamie's pulling that up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm in the same boat as Jamie. Obviously, Jamie's been here longer, but I've never seen it waived. Like Jamie said, there's different degrees of calculations that you can do, some more detailed than others. But in this case, with the, with the steep slopes and the down gradient sensitive area being the wetland, I think it makes sense to make sure that we're not sending more stormwater to that wetland any faster, and that's kind of what the calculations prove out, so.
Thank you, Matt. That was, that was where my concern was.
Just after the site plan review meeting, you know, we intend to provide the calculations, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jayce, you want to talk about that angle? We'll go to that one next.
Is it an ordinance or a preference?
The ordinance states in Section 275-56 lots, quote, "Where possible, side lot lines shall be perpendicular to the street." So, the planning board may determine if the proposed lot orientation is acceptable.
So, my opinion with that, because it's where possible, I think we'd have to prove that it would be impossible to have a perpendicular outline. Correct?
That would be my interpretation.
We wouldn't have to prove that it was impossible.
No, it'd have to be proven to us.
Right. You understand what we're talking about here? Is that angled lot? Just trying to figure out how to best have that, those lots layout so that they are both have sidelines perpendicular to the road.
Sure. We, we put that line in there so it was actually perpendicular to the topography, because the grades drop right down to the wetland. That's, that's why that lot stayed and to make the, to make it work for those two, those two single-family homes that are going to go in with the driveways, but. But if, if the board doesn't want to approve that, that one lot line that's not perpendicular, then we'll have to look for something else.
That would be my recommendation. I don't know if anybody has any heartburn against the opposite.
We don't, no.
Okay. All right, so I think the only outstanding thing that we haven't discussed is the open space and amenities piece of this. I understand there, there's a push or a recommendation to have open space set aside at the bottom of the steep grade. Not much of an amenity at the bottom of a steep hill in the woods. I don't know what the, what the board's thoughts are on, on this. We've talked about this on other developments and providing a more, a space that's more suited for types of recreation or.
They were bigger developments.
Yep.
And like, I just, so it's hard for me to picture what you can provide on five, you know, if someone was coming for, to make a five, five-unit subdivision, do, we have this discussion?
Okay.
Is the discussion because the open space is there?
Right, and I'm bringing it up because it is, it is a requirement and I just want to make sure that we're satisfied with whatever approach we're going to take. Go ahead, Jack.
Doesn't Booth BF connect with one of the trails?
So this, this is in the urban zone. I panned out my picture a little bit, but the, there is a trail system that runs not directly adjacent to this lot, but it's within walking distance from this lot. It's right, right down here by the edge of the river. Goes to the new high school. So there, there are some walking trails within reasonable distance from this location. And we, we do typically allow developers to use public amenities if they're within a reasonable distance. If there's parks or if there's trails, if there's.
Okay. Does anybody have any concern with that?
This is property right here. Is this, this is town property?
Which, I, I can't see where you're pointing.
It's that big open space?
Yep.
Correct, this town-owned property that then leads kind of to the high school, but it's very wet, wetlands back there. City-owned property, I should say.
Okay, so are we set on the amenities piece of this? Any feedback to provide?
As far as I'm concerned, the way this is laid out, the five houses, I don't see it a requirement for this area. So I would vote to waive it, in my personal opinion.
Well, we're not waiving it. They're just, it's where, we want to make sure it was sufficient. That's, that's why the question came up. So if we're, if we're, if we're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
The private trash pickup, that was one that was brought up earlier.
So the city won't pick, like, if development left orange trash bags at the end of the private way, the city doesn't pick that up? It has to be a private removal.
Do you want to take it? I'll take it.
You can take it.
Okay, I'll take it. So the, the city has a contract with a private waste hauler themselves, and the, that contract doesn't allow their drivers to drive down roads that are not municipally maintained. And then in addition to that, at the end of this current contract, we will most likely be updated to a new contract where all of the waste bins will have, will be uniform and be picked up by a remote arm on the side of the trash truck. And in that case, they have to all be spaced out a certain distance and in a line. They can't be double stacked or piled up or anything like that.
So it makes it difficult when you have, if every house has two bins?
Correct. If every house has a trash bin and a recycling bin and they're about two feet wide and they have to be a foot apart, and then there's five of them, which means there's 10 of them in a row, it does take up a good amount of space. So if they're along the private way and the, the trash truck was maybe willing to back out a little bit on the private way, it's now backing to, to 20 feet, 200 feet?
So we can't?
And if you took it to Booth, you'd actually be blocking the road.
It would go all the way across the parcel.
And they would have to obtain permission from the public works director for the pickup in general, because we, we don't, we're not obligated to pick up from a private development.
Yeah.
So they would have to get permission from the public works director, which given the guidance we've been given from our trash hauling contractor, saying that we're more than likely going to be forced to go to the automated pickup, I'm not suspecting we're going to be granting too many more requests for a private pickup on private ways, because
Yeah.
there's no feasible way to do the cans.
So we can't just leave the properties to their own demise, like responsible for their own pickup?
They are, they are responsible unless they get permission from the director of public works.
But we have a standard in the subdivision ordinance to address waste disposal.
So the homeowners document will have to say they're going to have a dumpster. If they have a dumpster, it has to be shown on the site plan. They could hire Trash R Us to come individually pick up trash bags from each front door. There's many ways to provide private trash pickup. They just have to demonstrate which method they're going to choose.
So the HOA decides that, like, if I wanted a dumpster from company A, they drop it off, it needs to be on a site plan?
Yes.
Correct.
We always check for the dumpsters on the site plans.
And it has to meet our ordinance requirements, which says you can't have dumpsters in the front yard. They have to be screened from public view.
People get them all the time.
Correct. We're working on that.
Yeah. There are some provisions for a temporary dumpster, but a permanent dumpster that's meant to service a permanent subdivision or commercial project does have to meet all of the ordinance requirements.
Given the layout of this project, I, I believe we're going to be using a private contractor to pick up the trash from the five lots.
All right, thank you.
I just find it weird because like towns have issue, no issue with having residents figure out how to take care of their trash. You need an HOA to have an agreement with a trash hauler, so everyone has to use the same trash hauler. It just seems weird. It just seems really weird. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, we just have to require it. So however they want to take care of the trash is, that's their prerogative, so. Okay, so I think we've addressed, I think we've addressed everything that was in the, the report. So I, I guess, does anybody else on the board have anything else? So I guess a couple of things, you know, obviously we had this discussion about side, the sidewalks, figuring out who, how you're going to manage road maintenance, et cetera. Our recommendation would be to, to start having these discussions. You don't have to wait to come talk to us to have these types of dialogue between Butters and what have you. So I would recommend going through those channels to, to figure out, is there any way to, to make this as least painful as possible if it goes forward? But other than that, I don't, we don't actually approve anything, right?
Nope.
Okay, so do you have any questions for us in addition to what we already, what we discussed or what we have asked you to go back and, and look at? Okay, thank you. All right, I appreciate everybody's time on this. I know that these are, these are challenging and trying to figure out how to go best do this. And I appreciate the board kind of helping go through and have this dialogue to, to kind of work on, how do we maintain consistency going forward? All right, thank you. Okay, so moving on to other business, planning directors' report.
I just wanted to update you on the campground ordinance discussion we've been having a few times. We are going to add that to the agenda for our next planning board meeting. We have one, we have another preliminary subdivision approval. That will be the first order of business. And then we're going to switch it over to a work session. So we're going to start our work session on the, on the campground ordinance. Some city staff have met with both the property owner of a specific campground. Again, this, this, this moratorium, this campground discussion is not specific to one campground. We, we have, we have a lot of people interested in one campground. I've sat down with both sides, reminded both sides that this is not talking about any specific campground, that it's talking about a campground ordinance in general. I've said to both of them that if during the review we start talking about a specific campground, I'm going to ask that the conversation be stopped, because we have a moratorium in place, so we can't talk about a specific campground. So just a reminder to, to myself and everybody that, that it's very easy to get caught up in the moment and talk about a, a project. But this, this is a much bigger picture than a project. This is a campground ordinance for the entire city for potentially the next 40 years. It's, it's been a long time since we've updated our current one, and it might be a long time since we updated it again. So it's, it's going to have to be a fairly comprehensive discussion, taking into consideration all of the changes that's happened over the last 20 years, 30 years, and trying to all rub our magic eight ball and trying to look into the future of the next 10 years of what a campground might, might come up with. We have taken the time to pull some ordinances from the state. We currently have an intern that we're also utilizing some of their time to, to compile this information into a, hopefully semi-organized readable document. The, the problem with, with campground ordinances is that not, not to even remotely the same. So it's hard to, it's hard to take sometimes a one-page, sometimes a 10-page document and compile it down into a little paragraph to, to try to say what it says. Obviously, we can't take 50 hours and read line by line 50 different municipalities' ordinances. And we are, internally we are, but we can't do that in a public forum type of thing. And, and we're going beyond Maine. Again, we don't want to just match what other people have done. We want to look into the future. So we're going outside of Maine, trying to find other municipalities, maybe across the country, that have more recently updated their ordinances to, to try to get the most up-to-date information we can to try to make sure we get this ordinance right without having to come back 10 times in the near future to amend. So that, that conversation we are going to put as a work session starting next meeting, because we only have one case ahead of it. And it's another preliminary discussion, so it's not, hopefully, a long discussion.
Have you invited other campgrounds?
Have we personally invited? We haven't invited anybody yet. The first time anybody's heard that we're doing it in two weeks besides internal staff is right now.
Okay.
So during the discussion, I'm sure we'll, we'll hear from other campgrounds, whether it's in person, whether it's via the world wide web or, or maybe some comments therefrom. Again, you guys are in the, the wheelhouse here. It's, it's, I'm more than willing to do everything on our side that can help you guys make the decisions that you're going to be making in the, in the months to come.
Great, thank you.
Do we have a cap on the time? Like, how late are we going to go?
So the last time we discussed this, I think the first work session wasn't going to be public involved. It was going to be more us giving you some of the information, you guys starting to digest it. 100% up in you guys' court how you wanted to do it, but I think one of the previous discussions was this work session was going to be more of a, give you guys the information and you guys start your original discussion and then have the public input at a, at a subsequent.
When there's a draft, I believe.
We don't have a draft yet. We can't.
No, no, I mean, I, I think we were.
A very rough draft.
Yeah.
Because the idea would be, yeah, so we give us time to coalesce on something.
Correct.
And then we start opening up for other public participation.
Both, we've had some residences give us some written documentation that will become part of your packet. The, we've had a property owner of maybe a future campground give us some documents that they want, part of the discussion. So all of the documents that have been given to us by anybody will become part of that packet for that meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else?
Pre-applications have started coming in again. I believe Jan is currently booking for end of August, middle of August. So we, we do have lots of pre-apps happening again. I, I don't think you guys are going to get a lot of restful Wednesday nights in the near future.
All right, thanks a lot.
I'm good, thank you.
I'll put a plug in also. Our third steering committee meeting is next week for the planning, sorry, for the comprehensive plan. And that is moving right along. And also, we've had some preliminary talks about potential zoning ordinance text changes regarding the industrial reuse zone. So we could maybe start to think about that. We have a provision in our ordinance that requires for the mill buildings, this is the industrial reuse zone, is specific to the mill districts. There is a provision in there that requires commercial space on the first floor, has traditionally been very difficult to accomplish for developers. And I think we're going to continue to see that issue come forward as potential developers are becoming interested in the mills and for residential uses only.
Right.
So it's just something to think about for the future.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Any other communications by the board? Any other? Go ahead, Lenny.
Just a comment and a question. One, I like that keyboard that Janice is using over there. That's kind of, I like the way that's made. I got one other question too about the library. Do you know what's happening with the good old library? Is it, is it stalled? Are they working on it right now or is it, what's happening with that?
We, there's a temporary funding situation with the library. So the project is currently on hold. The building has been made weather tight and it's on a temporary hold until some funding snafus have been addressed.
That's what I heard. They're working on it, but the money isn't into the bank yet.
The, the library association received federal funds via a grant for this renovation. Anytime you receive grants, there's lots of dotting your i's and crossing your t's that need to happen. The library association is in the process of making sure all of those i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Hey, anything else?
Motion.
Well, congratulations to Jace.
Oh.
He got married.
Jace got married?
He did.
No.
Congratulations.
Congratulations or condolences, whichever?
My wedding gift to you is to motion to adjourn this meeting.